Where does he go?
Where is he at?
I'm calling to order the Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand and twenty four Southeastern Regional School Committee meeting. Just before we do the Pledge of Allegiance and the Moment of Silence, I just want to tell everyone, if you haven't seen it yet, it is a very full agenda. We are going to go through everything, and I hope that we can still continue to have a productive discussion on these items. But I am going to stick very closely to the agenda tonight. So let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's stand for the moment of silence. So first item on the agenda is the public hearing for school choice for the year two thousand and twenty four to two thousand and twenty five. And without objection, I move to open the public hearing on school choice for the two thousand and twenty four to two thousand and twenty five school year. I'd like to open the public hearing on school choice, which is being held in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter seventy six, Section twelve B. The meeting was properly posted on the school's website and advertised in the Brockton Enterprise. The purpose of the meeting is to consider whether to adopt school choice or adopt a resolution to withdraw from the obligation of school choice. At this time, I open the public hearing on school choice to comments from the audience. Now, I would request that if anyone from the public would like to speak, please state your name, community, and whether you are speaking on your behalf or on the behalf of someone else. And just a reminder that comments must be limited to three minutes. Do you have anyone interested in speaking? All right, if not, without objection, I motion to close the school choice public hearing at six oh two P M. Now, without objection, I move to adopt a resolution to withdraw from the obligation of school choice for the two thousand and twenty four to two thousand and twenty five school year. Second.
Well, this is without objections.
This without objections.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on to the Student Representatives Report, and Brittany.
Greetings, everyone. Welcome to the month of April. This month, we have an exciting trip to Greece. We have a total of forty-two excited students and staff members who are going on a cruise to the beautiful country of Greece during our April vacation. They arrive in the beautiful city of Athens, where they stop for a plate of honey-soaked cinnamon and spice glucous maids while winding the streets of the city. If that doesn't make you want to go, a couple of items on their itinerary are going to museums, immersing themselves in Greek culture, then boarding the cruise ship to sail from Pirus to Mykonos. A trip to Greece sounds lovely, and I hope our hawks have a lovely time there. We also have skilled USA state competitions. This year, we have ninety-nine students competing in the state competition. We're planning on sweeping the competition away and achieving gold medals in all of our areas. Let's root for our hawks as they kill the competition with their fierce hawk talent to further the internationals. Earlier in the month, a group of six students alongside Miss Bree Miller and Mrs. Lewis Miller attended the Child Care Conference at Gillette. At this conference, the students and the teachers took notes on how the schools help spread awareness that surrounds mental health around their school. The six students along Miss Bree Miller and Mrs. Lewis Miller have been in the process of setting up an Active Minds chapter at Southeastern. This chapter is all about mental health and allows students to know that it is okay not to be okay. With the help of Child Cares, the students and the teachers have created a list of ideas that will help spread awareness at Southeastern about mental health. Earlier this month, Adriana Booms and I attended the Annual Student Government Day at the Massachusetts State House. Throughout the day, Adriana and I were immersed in the real-life government. We talked to State Auditor Diana DiZolio, Associate Justice Rachel E. Hirschfang, Representative Daniel J. Hunt, and so many more government officials that really brought the idea of the day-to-day government to life. Thank you to Mr. Cameron Costa, Mr. Michael Rose, and Ms. O'Brien, who also went with us to the State House.
Thank you so much for that informative report, Brittany. Moving on to announcements and public announcements. All right, we'll go to conferences, conventions, and meetings.
Among the list of conferences, conventions, and meetings, as you will see there, is Day on the Hill in Boston on May the sixth. And I'd like at this point to know which school committee members would like to attend so that we can register you and provide transportation. Workday, school day for a lot of folks.
It's great.
That's okay.
It was a really great experience.
Yeah, it's a Monday night. I will register us and make sure we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, FOIA news articles, et cetera.
So you'll see the news articles there from March two thousand and twenty four, a sampling. We just approved several new press releases to go out today, so you'll be seeing those coming out as well in the future.
Moving on to audiences and communication.
At this time, I would like to ask the chair to allow me to introduce our nursing-assisting teachers who wanted to address the school committee about the recent penning ceremony.
Absolutely welcome.
So my name's Nancy Monroe. I'm one of the nursing-assisting teachers, along with Laura Drew, we're here. So as you may or may not have known, we had our penning ceremony this past couple of weeks ago, March twenty first. Friends and family attended. Students celebrated completing the nursing training, the dementia certification, and many other things that we do within our shop. And also, we're getting ready for our Massachusetts State Board testing, which happens tomorrow at eight A M. So the students wanted to thank several of the school committee members who did attend to our penning ceremony, along with Principal Wacasar, Mary Koby, many, many teachers, even had front office secretarial staff. Almost all of behavior management came, have connected with our students in such a positive way. In addition to a bus driver, who really is just connecting with our students all on their own time, and we just wanted to say public thank you to them. Parents and family, they love, just love for the shop and the skills. The students felt valued. We even talked to them this morning, like, how did you feel? Said, oh, my God, I felt valued and loved by our community. We're going to do a special thanks also to Dave and Bob for all their hard work, too. So we got a lot of positive feedback from staff and family, especially related to seeing the students showcase their skills during our slideshow. And I'm still talking to different staff that are around the building that are really excited to talk to us about, like, wow, I know my students talk about skills, and you have this long list, but to see them in action was just really something that was very impressive to them. So we don't have a fancy product that we can bring you as a thank you. We're in the business of caring for people, so we wanted to present you with a thank you card. Simple, but effective, right? Students wanted to present this thank you card for all the time and effort that you put in to make the school and our shop feel like family. So David.
So sweet.
That was the effect I wanted. Thank you.
Well, thank you, just for all you do for our students. I got to tell you, that ceremony was just awesome.
It was a lot of fun.
It was, yeah, just a lot of fun. And, you know, I don't go into the classroom, obviously, on a daily, day-to-day basis, but I got to know those students quite a bit through that ceremony. So it was just, just a really great time. And, and, you know, I definitely felt that love in the room from so many people who came out for them. So it was just an awesome time.
Thank you.
And thank you to my colleagues who were able to attend that event alongside me and, you know, Mary Koby and Principal Wacasar. That was just, just an awesome, awesome event. Okay, next up, we have Robin Zoll, who's going to talk a little bit about.
Yes.
Yes, about voter registration.
Yeah, I think a lot of you know that I'm co-president of the League of Women Voters of Sharon and Stoughton. And as part of, we are embarking on voter registration driving. What we plan on doing is distributing birthday bags. We plan on, in the future, it will be given on birthdays, but we plan on a major distribution in October prior to the voter registration deadline. And what we'll be giving in the bags is voter registration form, probably something like the Bill of Rights or a pocket tuck, too simple. Stickers and candy, just stuff very nonpartisan, just about voting. So I just wanted to tell you about that.
So we're not going to be taking a vote today on, on that, but Robin just wanted to share something that she's in the process of doing.
We're looking for a grant.
Right, they are applying for a grant. Their efforts is, is nonpartisan, just really looking to educate voters and, and our, you know, our, our young people who are set out to vote for the first time in this election this year. So that's just really exciting. So next up, would you like to, is Dr. Howell?
It is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Shanna Howell, who is nearing the completion of her first year as our Vice Principal of Student Support Services and has come in and really knocked it out of the park, working with our behavior management staff, our school nurses, MTSS coordinator, and really helping to support our students. And I think a lot of folks sort of naturally associate their vice principal with discipline, but she is also a strong supporter of our students and their success. You will see her double dutch jumping, you will see her dancing with the kids at the school dances and supporting many of our students who struggle to get their hair done in time to get to school. She set up a hair care station for them and just among the many, many things she's worked on. But today, I've asked her to come and really give you an update around student behavior because it was one of the things that you raised as a concern at the beginning of the school year and that we've really been working to address. So, Dr. Howell.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me. She already introduced me, so I'm not going to say much. One thing I would like to say is that I'm a proud resident of Brockton, and it's something about living in, within the district that, not just during the week, but on the weekends. Yesterday, I ran into Brittany at Chick-fil-A. And so it's really nice to be able to go out into the community that I, I live in and to see students and for them to see me in a different light, like, with my son. You know, I'm a, I'm a regular Brocktonian, just like, like they are. So at literally every weekend, I see a student. I was in the gas station yesterday, there was another student, Brittany last night, so I'm just like, I love that. I love seeing the students when I, when I go out into the community. And I'm, because I do deal with discipline, it's nice that students know me and they haven't been in trouble. A lot of times, I don't know them because, you know, they haven't been in any trouble. So that also lets you know that they see me more than just as a disciplinary, but they see me in a different light as well. So when I first started, or actually in my interview process, it was very clear that there were certain areas that we really needed to address this year. And so I took it upon myself to put some procedures in place and put some things in actions to kind of, to kind of help out with those things. And I keep telling my staff, next year, we are going to be on it because now this year has really been a great foundation, a great benchmark. So a lot of what I talk about, there's really not, there may not be numbers to compare it to last year. I want us to not think about the past and just think about the future. One of the things that I, I always talk about, my theme, everyone knows, I talk about passing the baton. So how do we create an environment that if we're working with a student, whether you're a teacher, okay, you like, you've done everything that you can do, now you need to pass your baton to someone else. If you're a behavior management staff, you've gotten to the point, or maybe the student is disclosed something that is above your pay grade or not part of your job description, now you pass the baton to our guidance counselors or adjustment counselors. So I've worked really hard this year to make that our theme for us to really know when, okay, this is not me anymore, we need to pass the baton on to someone else. The same thing for my staff, passing the baton on to me when it comes to the consequences and the discipline with our students. So that's really helped us a lot. And one way I've helped that is that we have weekly meetings for behavior management. Every week, we meet for an hour and we talk about what's going on, what are some of the trends we're seeing. This is our opportunity to talk about news articles, to talk about, you know, if there's an article that gave away, or if something's happened at another school, what can we learn from that? So we do that once a week. Every other Friday, we have a meeting with all the staff that, pretty much all the staff are supervised, which would be the nursing, directive guidance, behavior management, our MTSS coordinator, attendance coordinator, as long as our reset coordinator. And this is just our time to bring up specific students that we may have concern about. And so you have all these people at the table who can give a little insight, maybe there's something you know from, you know, that happened last year, or, you know, maybe this is like the annual, you know, the, maybe a parent passed away a year ago, and maybe that's why that behavior is coming up, right? So it really gives us the opportunity to pull everything together because the nurse is here so much, right? And then, you know, our guidance department, the adjustment counselors here so much, but sometimes we don't get that opportunity to talk. So this gives us the opportunity every two weeks to talk about what's going on. And I think the great thing about that is that our staff know our students by their name, and sometimes if they don't know the name, they know the situation, right? So this really allows us to figure out, how can we help this student, and then when do we need to pass the baton on to someone else? So quickly, I just wanted to go over, overview, just a couple of things that I'm doing, my staff, and then I'll get into the data. So I know that's what a lot of people want to hear about, so I will get into the data. So if you maybe hold your questions to the end, because then, once you see the data, a lot of this will make sense, okay? So this year, we did hire a new behavior management staff. Her name is Destiny Rodriguez Fitzgerald. She is from Brockton as well. She's born and raised in Brockton, graduated from Brockton High School. She's been a great addition to our team. One of our staff members, Michelle O'Day, moved over into the reset program, and we'll talk about the reset program here soon. She's our coordinator. I kind of was, gave it to her, she ran with it, and she's been doing a great job with that. We have a new hall monitor, thank you all, for, for us. And Shane Coleman is, is not new to Southeastern. He actually is a graduate of Southeastern. It was one of our top scorers for basketball, and he's also worked here for over ten years in facilities. And he's really in the hallways, and, and he's more than a hallway monitor. A lot of the kids already knew him because he coached, he was already here. So it's a great connection for the students to see someone. So when he addresses them, they already know him, so it's actually been a wonderful transition for, for him. Him and Destiny both, I've made sure that I've sent them to professional development as they're learning what it's like to work in a high school, and especially with like the hall monitor, like, what can he do, what can he not do? Because he's part of the behavior management staff, but he's not a behavior management specialist. So we really talk about like, where does he, when does he pass the baton? If he's seeing patterns, if he monitors our e-hall passes, so if students are, if he's seeing patterns in, in certain students, he brings it to our attention for us to go back and look and say, okay, this person, every day at two o'clock, they're going, you know, what's, what's happening? And then we can address it with not just the student, but sometimes we have to bring a parent in and say, hey, are there medical conditions? Your child's having a whole lot of hall passes. So he really keeps monitor of that. And then MTSS is not a new position, but we brought back the attendance coordinator. So Lloyd Lamar, who is not new to Southeastern, has been working on that, and he's been doing an excellent job. People don't really realize how much an attendance coordinator has to do. Keeping up with students, he pays attention to tardies. We have a new rule, if a student is tardy five or more times, they get lunch detention. And some days, they have to sit in the principal's office and eat, eat their lunch. But what this has allowed us to do is to make sure that students are in the classroom, first of all, that they're safe, they're not in the hallway hanging out. But two, that, you know, they're in the classroom on time and they get the full class period. So he's done an excellent job of looping in students who've had attendance issues and were worried about whether or not we'll be able to allow them to go to the next grade next year or not, based off of their numbers. The state tells us how many accesses students can have, whether, and then when we need to make that decision. So with him doing the NTS and supporting those students, he's also contacting parents to talk about what's going on with their child, seeing how we at Southeastern can support these students. But sometimes, they're not here because they just don't want to be here, there's other things going on. And so he loops everybody in on, you know, he's finding out that there's situations that are happening. Next, I'm going to talk about some of the key focus areas that I have focused on this year. The first thing was IDs, and we're still working on that. So we, all of our students this year got their IDs the first day of school, maybe the second day, first thing in the morning, but they all had their IDs. And our expectation is that students will wear their IDs at all times. We know in certain shops, they cannot wear their IDs, they might have to have them on a sleeve, they're not over their neck. This is, not that this is something new, this is something we've always expected, but we just really have driven it this year. We've actually done drop-ins to classrooms one in the morning to check to see if students had their IDs, and they were very shocked. The teachers didn't even know we were doing it, we just showed up. We have, you know, you'll see in the hallway, students will even tell other students, like, where's your ID? You know, like, they think it's funny, but it's really a thing. And, you know, we try to explain to them, it's for safety reasons, we need to know who's in our building at all times, and we want to make sure that no one gets in here that's not supposed to be. We're able to identify who's supposed to be here by their badge. So I know this year, we've really have worked on, and we talked about a couple of other things that maybe next year we can implement to make sure that students all have their IDs. But we definitely have driven that into everyone's brain. I mean, and my hope is that over the years, you know, the freshmen, they don't know any better, so each year, as we bring students in, that they'll, they'll know that this is what we do here at Southeastern. The second thing, dress code, is a funny, I have a funny story really quickly. I know you have a lot on your agenda. After I was announced as the new vice principal, I showed up on the last day of school, and when I showed up, I was very shocked at some of the attire that some of the students had on. I was like, oh, my goodness, I can't believe, you know, the shorts and the crop tops and so forth. And so I knew that this was an issue. I heard from the teachers about, you know, this is an issue, students just, you know, dress very inappropriately. And so if you look in the handbook, it says that the guidance department is responsible for dress code, right? So this wasn't even something that was necessarily part of my job, but I felt like we needed to kind of snatch it up for a little while, just want to stay, I think, the same in, in, inside of the handbook. But we just needed the opportunity to put our hands on it for a little while. And so what we, what we did is basically came up with a procedure where we reached out to the students, explaining to them that we are buckling down on the dress code. So they were worn. It wasn't like all of a sudden, people just started coming up to them, but we allowed any staff member at the high school to be able to submit a student's name. We do not address students in the hallway. We do not pull you aside and say, girl, your shorts are too short. We would never do that because that's embarrassing, right? And you'll be amazed, some students, they like lift their jacket up or scooch their, you know, whatever down sometimes because they realize that we really want to take this serious. You talk about work readiness, and your dress is very, a big part of that. So we have a sheet that teachers, whomever, it could be a facilities person, it does not matter. Anyone can fill this form out, and a staff member will address them. And they bring them into the office, if it's, most of ours is shirts, so the shirts are too, we see too much. We, we had a donation, we have a lot of T-shirts that were, people brought from different departments across the high school, and we, we give them a T-shirt. So it's a natural procedure. So we give them a T-shirt the first time, this is just a warning. The second time, we give them a T-shirt, and then we call home. And that's a conversation with the parents, saying, maybe you didn't realize that your child, you know, this is the dress code and so forth. The third time, that's another conversation, and we, we only give out so many T-shirts. That's a conversation, and now the parent, you need to come in because clearly, this is a problem, right? So this is new. We have, technically, we have one female staff who addresses a lot of girls, and when our reset coordinator does not have students, she assists her. And then when it comes to boys, we have male staff that address them, again, just making sure that they feel comfortable having those conversations with, with those, with those students. So again, next year, we're really, we have more ideas. What we want to do for next year is we want to be proactive. So what, what we're going to do, the first thing is, when students come in, incoming freshmen for benchmark testing this May, I will be at all of those events, speaking to the parents while their students are presenting, I mean, while their students are testing. And one of the things I'm going to talk about is dress clothes. So they know when they go to buy schools for the fall, they're going to already know, no holes in the pants, no crop tops, no inappropriate shirts like Playboy. A lot of students have Playboy shirts, believe it or not, and half of them don't even know what it means. So just addressing that, just letting the parents know, this is our expectation. You know, a lot of these students, like, I've been here, no one's ever said anything before, and my, what I have to tell them is that I wasn't here, so I can't, I can't address what happened in the past. All I can say is, I can only address what's, what's in, while I'm here, this is what I'm going to do. And so it's still, it's a learning curve for us, especially our juniors and seniors who have been here, those who were in COVID, right? And pajama pants, which is normal to wear every day, you know, they still want to wear them, and, you know, definitely not in shop, right? Like, this is not appropriate, but we want them to be work-ready, we want them to dress appropriate all the time. I'm going to address the bullying procedure, referral procedure, and reset in the next couple of slides, so. So one thing I, I realize is that we do great work here at Southeastern, but a lot of times, depending on the person, they may approach a situation one way, and another person may approach it a different way. And so what I, I told the staff is, all I require them is that we all follow the same procedure. Based off your personality and how you talk to the student, it may look a little bit different, but we all should be following the same steps. And so all of my staff have been trained along with me, from me, sorry, I attended a training last summer about bullying, and it basically gave us a step-by-step guide as far as how we should approach a bullying investigation. And so this, you don't really need to know all of this, but this is kind of let you know that this is the process in which we take. What's a little bit different is that this year, I actually created forms, so staff is not writing on a white sheet of paper or random sheet of paper. We actually have forms that they fill out for this investigation. And most importantly, a lot of times, it's hard to determine if it's bullying or not, right? So we actually have a yes/no little checkbox that will determine whether or not it's bullying, and making sure that we follow all of the proper procedures. And this has really helped us this year in determining and realizing that a lot of times, it is not bullying, but we now have a system set up that maybe this time, it doesn't fall into bullying, but if it were to happen again, it is now bullying because the state says it has to happen more than one time, okay? So now we have a procedure on how we keep up with that data and that information, so that. So now we have a procedure on how we keep up with that data and that information so that if a student's name comes up, we can go back and look and say, was there an allegation before? And that was something we really just did not keep up with before. And so now we have the opportunity to keep up and stay and make sure that we're accurate and we're we're submitting correct data to the state every year that we have to submit. So that's the bullying procedure. Um, the next is our behavior management um referral process. So this process, I'm I'm, I want to take credit, and the process has really not changed much from last year, um except for one thing. So anyone can refer a student for behavior issue because something could happen in the hallway. You can find something in the bathroom. It could happen in the classroom, cafeteria. So that individual will submit a um referral, and everybody here knows exactly what that looks like. Um, and once they submit the referral, my administrative assistant, who is awesome, uh will receive that referral. And at that time, she puts it into our um school system, um called School Brains. And it, the behavior management staff, they grab that particular referral based off of the shop that the student is in. That behavior management staff, there's a couple of things that they all do when they first receive it. We always have to see if the student has an IEP or 504 plan. That is very important because if a student has an IEP, there may be a chance that we need somebody from special ed to be a liaison to be there with them as they talk about the situation. We just don't want to um grab a vulnerable student, right, that maybe it might been based off of their disability or anything like that. So we grab them in to have that conversation about what the issue may be. They do their thing. They go through the investigation. They give me a recommendation. And then we decide what action we're gonna take, okay? Sometimes it's just a warning. It might just be a conversation, um all the way up to out-of-school suspension, okay? Once that is done, um they fill out a form that's called a due process form. And then Ms. Bias takes that information. She closes out the referral inside of School Brains. And then she sends the person who sent the referral an email saying, your referral referral from this date has been closed. This particular behavior management staff has addressed it. If you have any questions, you can look into the communication log or you can reach out to the behavior management staff. So just kind of trying to close the loop on if I send a referral out, what happened? Because sometimes, you know, if a person gets gets in trouble during a shop week, you're a shop teacher. You don't know that the following week they were disciplined. So because they're not in your classroom. So that email is basically there to close the loop so that if you have any questions or concerns, you'll know that who you need to contact about that particularly. And last, we have what's called the at-risk referral form. So this is basically an opportunity for teachers, teachers and academic as well as um vocational. They've done everything that they can, everything that they've been trained to do to help a student that has an issue that's outside of behavior. So it could be that they're just not testing well. We've tried so many things and it's just not working. It could, it could be multiple issues, okay? It's everything besides behavior. Maybe they're having an attendance issue. Maybe, you know, they are having a testing issue. It could be multiple things. So the teacher then sends out what's called the at-risk referral form. It goes to our academic and vocational supervisors. They work with the student. I mean, they work with the teacher and say, let's work together. Let's see if we can figure this out. You know, this is their supervisor. They're helping them process through their problems. What happens is sometimes it's more than that. Maybe there's an issue going on at home. Maybe they find out that, you know, they don't, they have a problem that we, that the teacher and the supervisor may not be able to address. What happens is um a group of us who are the student um success teams, includes the head of special ed guidance and the other VP, um along with Mr. Lamar, who's our MTSS coordinator, we come together with those issues and we try to figure out a way to solve it. So um just depends on the issue. It could be a multitude of things. A lot of times it's not just one thing why the student is struggling inside of their classroom or shop. So this is a process that is, it was tweaked just a little bit this year involving more of the academic and vocational supervisors first to try to see if they can maybe um figure out a way to work out the problem before it moves on to someone else. But what we find is that a lot of times the students, it's outside of the classroom, outside the shop that they're really having an issue. So this allows us to try to address those issues. All right, so the reset program. Does everybody know what the reset program is? Okay, so the reset program, I cannot take credit. I did not develop it. I was given the baton when I arrived and said, hey, we want to do this program. Take it over. I'm like, okay, what is it? What are we doing? So basically, the reset program is just the alternative to out-of-school suspension. We try our best to do multiple things, community service, um alternative assignments, uh more, you know, guidance counselors, mediation. We try everything we can before it gets to out-of-school suspension. Sometimes it just has to be out-of-school suspension because it's just a a behavior that, you know, like fighting and things of that nature that you just have to OSS is the way we address it. But we try to avoid it as much as possible. So the reset program initially was started because we had a vaping issue, right? So we needed something to address these students who, the first time they get caught vaping with nicotine. So if a student is caught with THC, that's an automatic suspension, okay? But if it's nicotine, we want to put them into this program. It's an alternative to OSS. But as the years progressed, we realized that this is actually really good stuff. We need to use this for more than just vaping. We have students who are getting into little arguments and small things that actually something like reset where they have an opportunity to be inside of a room where we have academic support. They have guidance and adjustment counselors coming in, doing groups with them. They have time where they can go walk in, go shoot basketball. So it's multiple things. And it's not necessarily saying, oh, you're vaping. We need to figure that out. We're trying to figure out why are you vaping or why did you get into this particular argument or whatever it may be. Um, and we'll see some numbers on how many students we've had in the program. Uh, we only allow up to seven to eight students. Initially, we said everybody's gonna do five days, but there are instances where somebody needs to do three. We've actually suspended a student and had them come in and do reset afterwards because suspension is sitting at home most of the time. I mean, some parents make them do yard work, but you know, most of the time it's them just sitting at home, but we not, we haven't addressed the behavior. We haven't addressed the initial issue. So we use a reset as a follow-up after suspension. So maybe they do like a three-day out-of-school suspension and two days of reset so that they can process what actually happened. Why were they um in out-of-school suspension? Um, students only get one time that they can attend reset. So this is the one time. That's it. After that, we use other measures to to work with them. All right, for what you've been waiting for. This data um is uh from a week ago. Um, so it's probably the most current information. We might have had a couple more students here and there. Um, so when you look at our overall numbers, um you see that two hundred and thirty-one students have been referred. So that's not how many referrals received. Just of out of all of the fifteen eighty, two hundred and thirty-one have been referred. That's low to me. That's a very low number. Um, so ultimately, that's fourteen point six percent of our students have received a referral. Now, one student could have had multiple referrals, and we'll see those numbers here soon. But that's just the actual number of referrals that we have received. And this also includes if a student is in a fight in the cafeteria, we do go back to our system and add that in as a referral. So we can keep up with this data, make sure that um everything that we're reporting, we're reporting is as accurate as possible. So um a lot of times, I know people want to look at the demographics. Um, we also have to remember when we think about our demographics as a school, um that, you know, you look at these numbers like, oh, wow, um, you know, white is um way less than black. But we know that we have more black students at this school than we do white students. So those numbers are, you know, I love data, but you have to also know like the story behind the data and additional information about the data. But if you look at our overall numbers and percentages of students based off of their race, we're kind of uh in line when it comes to those numbers. So you can see those numbers. You have them in front of you. Uh, as as far as gender is concerned, um we do have um overall less male students at our school. But our males are the ones who are actually having more of the referrals. And you'll see a list of what the referrals are here soon so you can kind of get an idea of what um what we're dealing with with the students. Any questions about that? I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, actually, I I do. Um, so I noticed that the um the gender doesn't add up to a hundred percent. So I wasn't sure why that was unless I'm just not reading it correctly. Um.
I said, I don't, I'm not quite sure. I would have, I I didn't, my, our data, I don't know Jeff's position, but data. And he pulled these numbers for me, so I did not realize that. I'm not quite sure. Oh, I'm sorry. I know why. It's because it's not, it's ten percent of our overall females receive a referral. And twenty percent of all the females. Yeah, that's, I was like, wait a minute. So ten point four percent of all of our females receive, nineteen point two percent of all of our males receive a referral.
Okay.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Is that, is that what you think then with uh student race?
Exactly. It's the same thing. So this is not all of our students. Just of those two hundred and thirty-one, that percent received a referral. So this is not the fif, you can't look at the fifteen eighty. You have to look at the two thirty-one. Of those students, this many are black. This many identify as white.
So I'm wondering if in the next meeting, we kind of look at kind of the two thirty-one, what what the um student racial makeup is next to kind of what our student, overall student demographics are? Because I think that will help us kind of see.
Also, you can have an actual number.
Right, and then kind of the same thing with with gender as well. Um, that would help out a lot. All right, thank you.
All right, so again, just a few more numbers referring to the referrals. Um, as you can see, a hundred and sixty-one of all the the two thirty-one only have been referred one time. That, to me, that says a lot. That means a student did something, whatever it may be, and we've never seen them again. We haven't had any other issues out. Um, when it comes to two to five referrals, sixty-three students, again, this is just out of the two thirty-one, um have received uh referrals two to two to five times. Um, students who've referred um six to ten times, that's six, not a lot of students. And we have one student that's been referred more than twenty or less times, and everybody knows who that student is. So um, which is good. I mean, you know, so that just lets us know that, this is what I tell people. This shows that our teachers are doing what they need to do inside of their classrooms and shops. They are only really needing us when they just real, know that they cannot, this is beyond me. I called home. They did, they taking all the appropriate measures. They called home. They talked to parents. They come to us. We might just have a meeting to talk about it, but we don't use it as a referral. But they've done everything that they can and now it's like, okay, this is beyond me. This is a behavior issue and we need to address it. That's what this means to me. And I, and I think this is, it's really good numbers. Again, we don't have anything referred to, so next year we'll be able to to have benchmark numbers and kind of look at what we. Again, we have, um, I just wanted to break down our Ls and Fls and our um IEP and 504 students and just in gen ed. So that means they don't fall in um any of the top three. And so you look at the IEP, you think, wow, twenty-one point four, that is, that number seems pretty large. Again, that's of the two hundred and thirty-one. And so, you know, one thing I do love about our school is that we do have students here who need IEP, students that need 504. And sometimes a lot of these students are having IEP because of social emotional reasons, right? And so a discipline issue comes in and then that takes our opportunity to work with the student, to have them work with their adjustment counselor, to work, to work with our special ed um directors to try to figure out ways and mechanisms and accommodations to put in place to make sure that these behaviors don't happen again. Again, this is why we have sixty-three, a hundred and sixty-one with only one. Because sometimes it's just, it might be, you know, this, it's a multitude of reasons why students get referrals. But to me, I know if you look at that number and say, wow, to me, that's a high percentage. But um I think overall, the those numbers are um actually really not that bad. When you think about our overall students with IEPs and 504, um, that number's actually not that low. Any questions about that? Uh, last, just breaking down by class. Um, so yeah, I I, is that much we could say about that? What I will say that a lot of the juniors and seniors, their numbers are slightly higher is because of vaping. So what we find is on the weeks that our seniors are here from academics, that's when our vaping problem, our numbers increase. Um, a lot of these students, you know, sometimes they, you know, they're not here with us for a whole week. And so we don't know what they're doing during that time. And when they get here, sometimes adjust them back into the classroom and um vaping has been just an issue that we, you know, have been dealing with a lot with our juniors and our seniors. All right, so um three hundred, so two thirty-one is the number of students. Three eighty-nine is the actual number of referrals, okay? So um I might have said that differently before, but three eighty-nine is the total number of referrals. Two thirty-one are the number of students that have been referred, okay? So when you look at that, I just thought it would be good for you to know what the most used referral code? Disruptive behavior, violation um school rules and insubordination. Um, the least used would be um felony charge, thankfully, uh tobacco vape, tobacco vape sale and suspension. So those are, even though it's still a huge problem, it doesn't compare to some of the other issues that we we've been addressing. So what happens when a student gets referred? We have a meeting with the parents. And just to let you know, in our meetings, a lot of times you will have myself, a behavior management staff, a parent guardian caregiver, and then you'll have um a lot of times someone from our guidance department or adjustment um department. We want families to know that this is a team effort, that we all care about your student. We want them to know that this is not just me coming as the vice principal laying down the law on their student, but we want to figure out why is the student having these behaviors? So we have our adjustment counselors involved so that we can talk about what happens after this meeting. And so we get everybody involved. We all communicate. We talk before the meeting, so we're kind of on the same page um before we decide what the consequence may be. So when you look at this, our top action is actually a warning. So that's why a lot of those, that high number of just getting one referral is because we just have a conversation with the student, talk about that this behavior is not acceptable. These are the things that you need to do to change, um and so forth. So we do a lot of warnings, um and then you can see the rest. Uh, in-school support can be, it's not in-school suspension. I don't want you to think that's that. We do not have in-school suspension. It could just be that maybe they need to meet with a um a guidance counselor to talk about what's been going on. So it's just in-school support of that particular student. Lunch support is um lunch detention. Um, we have quite a bit of those. Um, OSS is thirty-seven. Uh, and some of those students, and that thirty-seven have been suspended more than once. So it's three days the first time, five days the next time, um and so forth. We don't have a lot of those, but it does happen. Um, parent conference, community service, mediation. Sometimes it's just a phone call home. But these are basically all the numbers, so.
But for every, every student that has a referral, there is an action that's.
There isn't an action. It is.
Yep, yep.
So I talked a lot about like the bad things that are happening. And when people look at me, they're like, I would never want your job. I don't want to discipline. But I have been very fortunate to be able to build relationships with students in so many ways. Holly already talked about, in the middle, um, one of our, uh, in our handbook, it talks about, you know, dress code and, um, you know, wearing bonnets and durags and things of that nature. So I said, what is a way that we can help the students who may, you know, I tell the students all the time, when I come into this parking lot, I may have a bonnet or scarf on my head and I comb my hair down when I get here. It's the truth. I'm a black woman. It is what it is, right? So I understand their pain. I get it. I get what they're dealing with. And so I created a a stand, carpentry, had a couple of stands that they made and they brought me two up. And um Ms. Wecker, sir, gave me a gift card and I put some money together. We started this out to get the supplies. Um, and thankfully, we've been able to keep the supplies because of staff who have donated from the district office all into the high school. So we've been able to keep this. If anybody else want to donate, please do. Those of you watching, you can donate. Um, and so we would be happy to take gift cards to Amazon, Walmart, beef supply stores, whatever it may be. But this is not just for a specific race or ethnicity. All of our students have come in here from every category that you can think about. Whether it be, I'm about to play basketball and I need to tie my hair back and I need a, you know, something, a hair tie, to we had a young man who has a lot of hair who came in and needed some product one morning. But what this also does for me is that when I'm in there, I get to talk to them. And it's not about discipline. They're in my office and it's not a parent meeting. So it all, it allows me to build a connection with students. That's just not me coming down, laying down the hammer with them. So I really enjoy that. Another thing, the first couple of pictures, um before COVID, we had something that was called the Hot Pride Awards. And this was an opportunity for us to, you know, just give recognition to those students who have received honor roll, perfect attendance. We used to have athletics involved, but they're gonna be doing their own awards now, so we took that out. This year, we added two new things. We added the vocational award because we look at academics. But vocational, we need to be able to be proud of those students. So the shop teachers were able to vote for two students from each grade level, for term one and term two. And we awarded them in front of their whole class. And that was really nice. And the last thing we did is we allowed for students to vote for a staff member that they felt like needed to be recognized. And so um three out of the four are teachers and one is an administrator. We haven't awarded that person there yet. Uh, but this is a great opportunity to recognize the great things that our students are doing. None of our students who are currently here ever had the Hot Pride Award because of of COVID. So it was nice to bring this back and give us an opportunity again for me and my staff in a positive light to recognize these students and the great things that they're doing. And then I'm gonna toot my horn a little bit, but on Friday, um I represented Southeastern at the Math CTE Leadership Conference where somebody got an award this weekend. Um, and I was able to um to present and 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 represent Southeastern and um our other vocational supervisor who's not here. He, uh, Jared was the facilitator. He did an excellent job. But we really did make Southeastern shine in front of the whole state. And I'm not gonna lie, we did a really good job. Jared did an awesome job, but it was a great opportunity for me to talk to those who are at um schools all across the state to see what they're doing and um exchange phone numbers and say, you know, let's keep it. And these were mostly teachers, but still, they had a lot to say, a lot of great, a great insight. And so it was a wonderful time for me to be able. And so it was a wonderful time for me to be able to engage with others from other school, um, from other schools across the state. So that's all I have.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Any questions for Dr.?
Just a quick question if possible. One of the things that I'm not understanding, and first of all, this is a great presentation, but one of the things that's happening in public education is we have become kind of afraid of mentioning parent parental involvement with respect to discipline or behavioral management. When you look at this, I looked at your page number four, where it says, "Behavior Management Procedures, Referral Process." Parenting is not mentioned here at all, and I'm just wondering why.
Yep, so we, no, this, this is our responsibility, just our overview. But part of that procedure is that we have to contact parents, we cannot, um, if we investigate anything, we have to notify the parents that we investigate. Same thing is, we have to search students. So when we search here, we have a procedure, that when we search here, there's always two staff. We ask the student, who would you like to be in the room? Because, um, we can't just assume that a person appears as a female, that they identify as female, so we ask them, who would you like in the room with you? A supervisor is not in there because most, myself, I cannot be in the room, because ultimately I could have to be the one that does the discipline, right? So we have two staff members, sometimes we have other administrators who have to come in and help us, especially when it comes to, um, female students, because we only have so many staff that are female. Um, and before, after we've done the search, we do contact parents and let them know that this happened, whether we found something or not. If there's just a regular referral, once we've done our investigation, we always contact the parents. The parents are all, so all two hundred or whatever that number is, those parents, caregivers, whoever, guardian, they've all been contacted, that's just part of our procedure. This is just the overview of what we do, it doesn't talk about like each step. So like, for example, step number, uh, step number four and five, that would be when, in that process is when we would contact the family.
Okay, just another quick question, doctor. The three hundred and eighty-nine referrals, so the racial demographics regarding those referrals, is that possible for us to get? Because that's the same thing we do in civil rights, you look at the traffic data, it, it's, that's similar to a referral.
Yeah, I think that's, is that what you were asking for?
Yeah, Tony, we're, we're going to look at that.
So there's just not the two thirty-one, is that?
Exactly, yep, yep.
So you can compare what the overall numbers are as a school and then what it, when you get the referrals?
So that gender and then like 504 IP, ELL breakdown?
This is awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, actually, I wanted to piggyback on Tony's question, and then I had a separate question. So if a student gets a warning, is the parent still going to be contacted even with a warning? Okay.
Even with the warning, because sometimes it could be a behavior that the parent can, for example, if a student gets caught wandering the hallway, we'll call and say, is there anything, like, for, I can give you one example, I dealt with was that a student was wandering, and this was not their behavior. And, and, and actually, the shop, shop teacher that referred them was very shocked and concerned. So that made us call home and say, hey, is there anything going on? We just want to, we talked to your student, they're saying that, you know, no, I just, you know, they had all these excuses, and we haven't had that behavior anymore. So we do contact even with a warning. If we talk to a student about any behavior, we have to call the parents, we call the parents. So if all these referrals, we talk to the students, we're going to call home.
Okay, perfect. And then the other one had to do with bullying. I just wanted to know, like, how do you define bullying? Because you talked about a checklist model.
So it's not me, it's the state.
Okay, so you're using the state guidelines?
We're using the state guidelines, it is not me. The checklist is based off of what the state guideline says, where it says there has to be one or more occurrences. And this is just not bullying, you know, it's also cyberbullying. And so we've had instances where, you know, things have been done on YouTube or on Snapchat and so forth. And so we, we address those just like we would any other bullying investigation. The good thing is, we've had seven, but we've had more allegations that a lot of times we realize the state requires us to put both, so we can't just report how many bullying cases we've had. We have to report, there was an allegation, nothing was found, and then how many overall bullying cases we had.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much for your leadership. I mean, I have witnessed so many times your students coming up to you and talking to you, and, and that's just so wonderful, the, the rapport that you've built since you've been here, and it's only been a year, so. So great job with that, and, uh, thank you so much for this presentation.
Thank you for having me, I appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, and without objection, I move to approve the items in the consent agenda as presented. And I also want to acknowledge, we, we had four donations, um, within the past month. So, um, I want to thank Controller Sales and, Controller Service and Sales in Providence for an Island for donation of four three-phase AC induction motors for the electrical program. We received, um, from Allegiance Trucks in Walpole, Mass, uh, donation of an Allison Transmission Core and International eight-twenty-six Diesel Engine Core for the diesel program. From Kenneth Morris of Northeastern, Mass, um, we, um, he donated a Canon Rebel SL2 camera with attachments. And then just want to thank everyone who donated to the Nest Career Closet, that is greatly appreciated. Moving on to our financial report and our treasurer's cash report, and Karen.
Did you want to take a vote on the consent agenda, or you don't have?
I already did.
Oh, you did, okay, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Didn't want to miss any steps. So tonight's report is cash balances as of February twenty-ninth. Uh, you'll see the summary of the financial position there with the different shades representing the balances, the receipts, and the expenditures for the past six months. Uh, which ties into the cash flow report, month by month, with the ending cash balance being sixteen million point four. There was, uh, one point one million of expenditures that were non-payroll, three point five that were payroll related. So total expenditures were four point six, leaving a cash balance of sixteen point four. Uh, next page shows the gross paid summary reports through the month of February. Total payroll's been fifteen point nine million. Pretty good. It goes away through the year, right? Then the next page is the reconciliation of cash between bank statements and the general ledger system. And it's, looks pretty good, most of it is outstanding checks that, you know, across the months and everything else is just as I expected. Uh, the next page is the budget to actual report. Majority of the communities did pay their assessments in the month of February that would do on March first, and the other two that weren't received by February twenty-ninth were actually received in March. So we're in good shape there. And that's about all I have.
Thank you so much, any questions for Karen? If not, without objection, I move to accept the treasurer's cash report. And we'll move on to, uh, the Assistant Superintendent of Finance Administration's report, and Mark.
Yes, good evening. So, uh, as you see, the appropriate budget is there. We're roughly twelve point three percent still available, so four point six million to finish off the year, so we're definitely in good shape. Uh, we had our administrative meeting this morning, and, uh, at this time, we start looking at purchases, maybe from FY twenty-five's budget requests that we can make this year, going into the last part of the year, with some available funds that we still have going forward. So definitely in good shape this year for FY twenty-four, and also our revolving accounts. So, um, they're all in good shape, overall, we're in a positive. A few still have some outstanding invoices and things to collect, but again, nothing that's not typical at this time of the year. Uh, all in good shape. Does anyone have anything, questions?
Any questions for Mark?
And then next month I'll have some offsets, again, just to wrap up the, some of the purchases that we make in FY twenty-five.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
And move on to the ratification of our payroll warrants, I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved with respect to, uh, C and D.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll take it to a vote, all those in favor?
Alright.
opposed, and then one recusal, correct? So it's eight and one recusal. Thank you so much. And we'll move on to old business and the STEM building update.
So, um, two weeks ago, we had the walkthrough for the STEM edition, and we had, um, uh, nine bidders come through, some of those were sub-bidders, but it does look like we have a nice pool of bidders who, um, could submit bids. They're due the eighteenth, our filed sub-bids are due Thursday.
Yep, the eleventh.
The eleventh, and then the general bids will come in next week. So let's keep our fingers crossed, um, you know, it's a good sign that there are so many people who came for the walkthrough. And, and our OPM is still shaking the bushes to, to get a few other people, so. I'm optimistic about how things are going to shake out. And then, um, if the bids, I spoke to chair, uh, the subcommittee chair, um, earlier, um, if those bids come in, uh, when those bids come in, we will, um, schedule a subcommittee meeting, and then if those bids are in good shape, we're going to start meeting once a week if possible, to really, um, you know, accelerate the program.
Andy, do you have anything that you want to add?
Uh, no, not at this time, just looking forward to the bids coming in, like, I'd like to see what the numbers are going to be, so.
Is it April eighteenth?
April eighteenth. We'll have a good sense, I think, on Thursday of this week, when we see the, the filed sub-bids and see how they compare. But, you know, to be honest with you, we know that the filed sub-bids are, probably should be about in line with what we saw the last time, because it's the fire safety and the major HVAC, um, so we don't anticipate the savings to be there. They should be in the general base.
Any questions for Holly or Andy? We'll move on, um, next up is the FY twenty-five budget.
Alright, so, um, Mark and I, and many of you, uh, school committee members, have been on the grand budget tour of meetings. Um, and so we don't have, haven't had any town meetings or, um, city council votes yet, so we will keep you posted. Uh, but so far, people have been, have been very receptive to the budget, um, no, no significant concerns or questions, um, so far, so.
I want to thank you and Mark for going out to all these meetings. I mean, it's been late nights, several nights in a row during the week, and it's going to continue, so I appreciate all your time and efforts there, it's a busy time, and there seems to be a lot more interest, it feels. I don't know if that's true, but, um, but we appreciate you. Next up is the equity audit.
Alright, and, and Rob may touch on this later in his report as well. Uh, but I did want to let you know that our student and family surveys went out. We had over twelve hundred students that completed the student survey, which is a wonderful response rate, but we've only had two hundred and one families who completed the family caregiver survey. So we had a deadline of that for April the fifth, and they, they closed the survey at that time. Um, we're going to reopen that survey and resend it out to our families, because that's a fairly small percentage of families. Um, so we really just want to make sure that, you know, people get a chance to, to, uh, to complete it. So, you know, please through your own networks, if you want to just, you know, ask families, um, to, um, to please complete it. It only takes about ten minutes. We are sending it out to, um, in English, Haitian Creole, Queverdean, Portuguese, and Spanish. So, um, it is available, a fully translated version, so not Google translated, actual translated versions are available for, for families, so.
Kelsey?
Yeah?
I just have one question, is this going out to current families, or are we going out to?
Current families.
Okay. And I have a question, is there room in the budget, or is there an interest in offering incentives? Because I'm thinking about the demographics of the student population, and an incentive may be able to bring up, um, the response rate. However, I know that you've already had families complete, so I don't know kind of what the back end is of that.
Well, that may come up when we're trying to get our family focus groups together. Um, that we may, may at least provide some food and some.
Sure.
So we're working on that, that's our next step, we actually met today, and I, I don't want to steal Rob's thunder in case he's got this in, in his report as well.
Everything's great. Everything's great.
You know, meeting on, on scheduling the onsite visit, they'll be here April thirtieth, May first, May second, and that's when they're going to do some student groups, family focus groups. Um, Devla is working on scheduling, they do want to do a virtual meeting with the school committee, um, just, just you guys. So, um, she's working on scheduling that in the next couple of weeks.
And that would need to be a public reading?
So it'll, it'll have to be posted publicly, but you're not going to be deliberating or deciding anything. So we can post it as like a workshop, um, so it doesn't have to broadcast on.
Okay. I was wondering about that.
Because, you know, you should, you should have the opportunity to speak.
Right.
For you as well.
I will be the host.
So we'll work out the details of that, but, but you will be your own focus group.
Any further questions about the equity audit? Alright, moving on to new business and the field trip to New Hampshire. We actually have two field trip requests here. So, the first one is New Hampshire.
One says twenty twenty-three?
No. Oh, oh, we put it in here because you, you did approve it last year.
So the pictures are from last year.
So we wanted to share the photos.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So it's a field trip request, I'm just, um, field trip, trip, request from Automotive Collision Diesel Metal Fab Precision Machine, um, and, um, to look at how STEM is used in dry racing. And so they went last year, you did approve this trip last year, um, and they got to go, and they had a wonderful time. They got a lot out of it, um, and so, which is kind of cool. How do I get to your shop going on this? So they really did have a wonderful time, and so I'm asking you to once again approve, um, the, uh, the field trip to Epping, New Hampshire for, uh, the programs that are listed.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the trip to Epping, New Hampshire.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, let's bring it to a vote. All those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed, abstentions, I have it nine zero, thank you. The next is field trip to New York City.
That's right, so this is to approve a field trip to New York, uh, for the Legal and Protective Services Program. And I am going to ask Ms. Allen if she wants to tell us a little bit more about it.
Sure, so good evening, everybody, Patricia Allen. Um, so, um, this was, I can't take the, um, credit for this, but, um, Trooper Montero, who is working diligently with our students, um, he's a Massachusetts State Trooper, and he came up with the idea, he's done it with several other schools, he's done it with Brockton High School, he's done it with, um, Rebecca High School, he's done it with, I think, North Attleboro. So we want to make it an annual trip for our criminal justice students. The trip starts, it's a one-day trip, we leave, we all meet here around six-thirty in the morning, and we end up back here on eleven PM. It's escorted by two police officers, two state troopers that will be joining us and three of our instructors. We will leave in the morning, we're going to request to have a breakfast and lunch bag sent to our shops the day before, and then the troopers will be providing dinner, and we'll have pizza and, um, and alternatives for anybody that's school free, bringing that. Um, the day starts with, um, the nine-one-one memorial, which, it really shows all of our students, I mean, we have such a big umbrella of professions we can go into. And so it shows how the nine-one-one dispatchers, which are senior, getting certified in now, um, beginning of their senior year, and EMTs, and paramedics, and firefighters, and police officers, and the community just really, you know, came together and made something that was so devastating, you know, and the idea of terrorism, you know, really shows our kids, you know, is part of our curriculum, so it really brings it kind of all together. So I really call it a field study, which they can really, you know. And they're also, um, being escorted, New York Police Department, State Police will be meeting us there. They will escort us, um, from there to the World Trade Center. And then the Coast Guard will be taking all of our students, set us higher to pay for a tour to the Statue of Liberty. The Coast Guard will be taking all of our students on the boat, and we'll have an escort with the New York State Police, Mass State Police, and the Coast Guard to bring us over, up the coast and personal to our Statue of Liberty. And then we'll get back on the bus and have some dinner and head on back. And then our students will, you know, we'll talk about, and we'll have some, obviously, some type of a lesson plan, and kind of go away, send off with our students, we're, we'll put together a really nice PowerPoint, you know, with them, and they can kind of all have it upon graduation, so we can.
Any questions?
Yes, Kelsey.
What date will we, does this on?
Um, this year, it's on Thursday, May ninth.
They got free?
Are you excited? Students to attend school on May tenth?
Yeah, yeah, so that's really my concern, like, the next day attendance.
At eleven o'clock, that's easy. I think we're doing it right before, like, their senior week and stuff like that, so it's kind of like, their grades are kind of getting to, you know, they're closing and all that, so there's, you know, the stress of colleges and all that other stuff, it's just kind of like, you guys did a great job, you've done it. Like, this is all the opportunities, you know, and all the networking that you'll meet, um, just all that. We had, uh, on ten students this past summer that went to the State Trooper Academy for the weekend, and, you know, um, they actually paid for, for ten of our students to go. Usually it's like a four hundred dollar cost, and we got to sponsor, you know, ten of our students to go. So that was kind of a nice thing to do.
Fantastic, what a great opportunity. What a great opportunity. Entertained a motion.
Second?
No. Make the motion.
I make it. I don't have it in front of me. Someone else can make it.
Second.
Any further discussion? Let's, if not, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I have it 9-0. Thank you. Have a great trip.
Thank you, Sophie. I want to apologize. I didn't see Mr. Goff.
I didn't see him. Thank you.
Actually, let's call up Mr. Goff here. Sorry about that.
Mr. Goff, I didn't see you when I was talking about.
No, that's fine. I was just going to answer questions if you guys had. That was all. Nothing major.
Yeah. Curtis Goff from our automotive technology program who will be going with the students to New Hampshire. So I apologize.
No, that's fine. I just was going to answer questions.
We hope you have a wonderful time.
Well, we should. Hopefully it's not 90 degrees again.
Without a tree in sight.
Thank you, guys.
Moving on, high school student handbook 2024-2025.
So I brought the summary thing. Leslie, do you want to?
Yep. So like in previous years, we did multiple layers of reviewing the student handbook for revisions. So we do send out to staff, all staff, to see if they have recommended changes. Dr. Howell brought together a group of students that, especially around the areas of dress code, as you know, it was an issue, especially the ones that were emailing us in complaint about it. So she brought a team of students together to really go through and look at the language and suggest changes. The administrative team also works, and then the school council goes through, which is comprised of a parent member from each of our nine towns, a student member, and some of our staff members. So collaborating all of those recommended changes, and then we went through it. And then we kind of compiled it into this list, and the school council approved it last week. Or two, I'm sorry, I'm not sure. I've had two meetings since, so.
Are there any particular areas you'd like to kind of focus on for the?
No, a lot of them are topical things. The one thing that we did not have in our handbook that was taken out was the search and seizure laws. And I don't remember when that got removed, like, it had been that long ago. So we did put the legal language in there. The other piece that was really confusing was our ways that we were trying to calculate high honors and honors, right? So we called around to different schools to see how they labeled it. And we had a grade point average, which we don't normally calculate on an ongoing term basis. So we switched it to what the consensus was, was the As and As and Bs. The one thing that I know I had talked a little bit about with this group was the Val and Sal. So we had done an unweighted GPA because of early college high school. And the students that, we were always going to have a Val and Sal if we entered our, once we started our full dual enrollment program, like, they would only be early college high school students. So we unweighted it at that point. But the reality is the Val and Sal are really just about other graduation speakers. So before I even addressed it back in January, I brought it up as a topic of discussion with the school council. Figuring the most involved parents, right, would be a good audience. And to be honest with you, everyone was like, get rid of it. And I was like, wonderful. So even the kids were like, it's, you know, wait a minute, you know, we do so much, you try it, like, it puts a lot of stress on us. So what they really wanted to do was come up with a structure to determine who was going to be the graduation speaker. So Holly and I met with the administrative team. We kicked it around, like, how do we feel? Because before you make a change in the handbook, you have to make sure that everyone is kind of on the same page. And I think the administrative team, out of all the groups that I met with, had the hottest time going back and forth with the Val and Sal. So we came up with the idea that we would get together a very cool stakeholder group of teachers, students, staff members, parents, and administrators to determine three separate areas that really combine as what we do for the whole student. So maybe a vocational speaker, an academic speaker, and like that athletic extracurricular, and then have the students weigh in on what the rubric and the criteria are for selecting those students. So I think it just brings us to a place where everyone has the opportunity to really do it. Because, you know, again, with the awards, when you see it, if you, you keep it just a grade point average, you know, a lot of times the kids that do get awards through our hot pride assemblies aren't always the best, but they're the most improved. And I think that that gives a real balance to who is able to speak. And let's be real, the kids do not want to hear from the adults at graduation. They want to hear from their peers. So I think that would be one of the biggest highlights. And then Dr. Howell and her team, if you look, the dress code is the longest. But again, too, I think the kids just wanted more clarity. They wanted to make sure that we were being fair, male and female. And according, you know, the hat hats are something that we are adding, not just the durats, but maybe getting back to no hat rule. But it does allow some teachers, especially in the vocational areas, where putting the hats back, obviously in culinary, and when you're working under the hood of a car, you know, underneath with the grease, it gives the teachers a little bit of wiggle room in there as well to allow it. And crocs. I wouldn't, but, you know, again, crocs, they're comfortable. You know, you see all our, we have tons of nursing and medical students that that is industry standard, but for gym class, not necessarily. You know, you cannot wear those in metal fabrication.
Don't worry about it.
No.
So Leslie, before we take a vote, would you recommend that we waive additional readings? Or is there a lot of changes that would really necessitate having to look at this multiple times?
I would prefer, can I, Leanne?
Yes.
I would prefer for you to not waive the second reading. I think that this requires the school committee to review.
Make sure it's comfortable with all of you.
Okay. Then we don't need it to be done. We can wait till.
It just needs to go out to parents by August.
Oh, we got plenty of time.
We have plenty of time.
Not really. These months fly.
Apparently, yeah.
All right. So any questions for Leslie around the student handbook? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the first reading of the 2025-24-25 high school student handbook as recommended by the principal.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, let's bring it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The as have it 9-0. Thank you. Moving on to deratification of the Federation Agreement Amendment.
I do want to make a note for Ms. Souza, that this involves the Federation. Okay. So as you know, through negotiations with the, with the Federation over a couple of months, over a month, we were required to negotiate the bonus for the 24-25 school year. And we agreed ultimately to maintain the $6 a day retention and recruitment bonus for the 24-25 school year. The change that we made to this bonus is that we would typically require people to return for the following school year and not pay it out until October. But we did agree to, the negotiating committees on both sides agreed that we would pay it out in the second pay period of July 2025. So that, and that any future bonuses are subject to negotiation based on performance metrics that are mutually free to pump by. So this is the agreement, the amendment, second amendment as proposed by the negotiation subcommittee in collaboration with Federation Negotiation Committee. And so I'm asking for the committee to ratify it so that it can forward it to the Federation for their signature. Any questions for Holly?
Yes.
This was budgeted in?
Yes.
No.
Just checking.
No, Mark said no.
All right. Well, then bring us to a vote. Oh, wait. Before that, we need, thank you, Tony.
Move to ratify the Federation Agreement Amendment that was voted by the school committee during executive session of March 12, 2024.
A second.
Any further discussion? If not, let's bring it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have one recusal, so it's 8-0-1. Thank you. Moving on to graduation.
So we are, believe it or not, actively planning for graduation. And so we wanted to talk about, it is Wednesday, June 5th. Brain Day is Thursday, June 6th. So we wanted to talk with you about your role as school committee members in the graduation ceremony, preferences for what that looks like for you. We have tentatively talked about this year letting the vocational teachers hand diplomas to their shop. The vocational teachers walk up to the, you know, walk up with their students. They escort their students up. And we had thought maybe that would be a nice way to honor the teachers who have kind of brought people across the finish line. But certainly beyond that, I'm open to whatever suggestions. I think first and foremost, I think there are some basic things, like, do you guys like sitting off to the side? Or do you want to be back on the stage? So, I mean, I think those are things that you can decide. I would like to ask the chair to deliver remarks. And I'm not sure if there are other questions.
So I guess the first thing is, side or stage?
Side.
Side?
Side.
I would vote side.
Okay. So there we go, side. Any other preferences you want to make known in regards to graduation?
I would say I love that the shop teachers are going to hand them their.
Yeah, I'd say that's a great. I think that's really special. With their shop teacher, I think that's meaningful.
Yeah, I think that's really special.
It's who they spent three and a half years with.
One of us.
So I think we're all on good there. All right. I did like last year that, you know, at the beginning, we brought the committee up and introduced them. Is that something we just want to do?
Yes, I think we should do that again this year.
All right. We'll, we'll work out a couple of other details with you as we, as we move ahead. But just keep that date on your calendar, Wednesday, June 5th. We are going to limit tickets for our students again to four. That's just the maximum capacity we can support safely on our property. If you have additional questions, I'll do.
All right. Now, we're moving on to the report of committees and administrators. And first up, which I don't think you get to be first up very often, do you?
Oh, perfect.
And there's not much here, so that's good.
Yeah.
No, so, yeah, go ahead. I did just want to notice that Leslie has done a very nice job of including a lot of the press releases and things in here. So if you want to, please take a look at those.
Yeah, I don't mean to go through every attachment. They're there for your, your pleasure. I just do want it as another point is, because we are doing the equity audit, Ms. McLean and I decided to do a one-year extension on the school improvement plan. At the last school council meeting, I will be sending this information out to the staff. I just did a progress report on where we are with our student achievement data and got the school council to extend our one-year school improvement plan for the third year. But then, too, remember, we have not officially received an unembargo Niasq report yet either. So it will allow Ms. McLean and I to really fold in the equity audit where we are at the, the end of a normal school improvement plan would consist of a three-year plan. But remember, when we started it, it was just really that first year out of the pandemic, and we needed some real new, real data to work on. So we'll have three full years of inclusive data along with our equity audit and I mean as findings, which will inform the school improvement plan and the strategic plan. So I think it was a wise decision. That is in that for your perusal. We do have, and congratulations, Jerson and Tony, we have our Mava Outstanding Student of the Year Award from the city of Brockton, Christina Green. And she is the part of the first graduating class of the networking and cybersecurity program. So it's awesome. This is their first class, and she is taking the award. So that is excellent. We talked tonight, Brittany mentioned in her report, 99 teenagers going for a two-and-a-half day conference to Skills USA takes an army of vocational and academic teachers that give up from Thursday night all the way to basically Saturday evening and not much sleep to get our kids ready for the competition. So I want to make sure that they have a shout out for all their work with that because you come home exhausted and no voice in the blood tide, kids that are competing. I wanted to put on your radar that we are hosting our next two dental and medical ceremonies that are during the day. If you can sneak in, they're, both events are in the SCAP on the 9th and the 10th of May. And we will host, I believe, our fourth signing day, which is our opportunity to recognize our students that are going to full-time, high-wage employment upon graduation. Our number last year, you know, I'm about the numbers and beating the records. I think our number last year was 44, to be determined, but our outlook looks really good to beat it again. I included our updated community partnerships. As of last week, when I presented to the school council, we had 322 juniors and seniors taking advantage of cooperative education, which was, we hadn't even hit the end of third term yet. There's still a pipeline of juniors that are racing to get that grade up in time for our fourth quarter so that they become eligible. So Leslie and Jared and Mary are really pushing hard on beating the total, which is, I believe, 375. And the kids look at the wall outside the calf, and they tell me they're going to beat it. So some really great opportunities in here. I know I talked about Julie Cunado DePina, our former school committee rep that won the MLK Award for Boston College. She is just amazing. So I always say that you don't know where you're going unless you remember where you came from. And she sent every single staff member that touched upon her life here at Southeastern a copy of her speech, which she made that night, along with the award. And she took, wrote about the village that really picked her up and had an impact on who she is today and her life of service. So I would be remiss if I did not include that in there because that is what Southeastern is known for and does very well. And then Agitaeus breaks. I'm telling you, she will be in the U.S. Senate somewhere because that young lady had an amazing, she had a nice press release, will be going out. And I had mentioned, we had just found out prior to the last meeting that she was selected to be on Governor Haley's Youth Council. And the, the great thing about that child is we can stand a lot to learn from her diplomacy skills and how she really listens to both sides of the argument and really comes with some thoughtful questions. And that other night, Holly and Christine were, were at the school council, and, you know, it was a long meeting. And it's like two minutes before, she must have put her, her Google Maps on to find the nearest target, and it accidentally went off, and you saw her. And it was the first time in three damn years I ever saw her speechless. So it was great. It was just very, very fitting. But she is, she is a student that has fought and learned how to advocate for herself, for students with disabilities, the students of color, and she does so with such class and grace. I couldn't be any more prouder of her development here. So, and then I did include, just for your records, our eight-year staff and student attendance by month, updated, as well as our spring advisory minutes. As you know, each one of our vocational programs is required twice a year to review the curriculum, spoken sequence, industry trends with our vocational teachers to make sure that they to make sure that they stay current, updated, and that we are supporting their needs throughout our budget process. So, that is in there for your perusal. And then Mr. Goff, who left, our, his students competed in a, a competition and they sent us a thank you note about our student performance. So, she stuck around to get the kudos, but they do a really nice job and it is nice that someone recognized that hard work.
Well, thank you, Leslie. Any questions for her? I just want to tell you, I, I was just so impressed by your presentation at the school council meeting. Just so thorough for that school improvement plan. So many things that you are thinking about all at the same time. And so, I just really appreciate all your hard work on that.
Thank you.
Moving on, TI Director's Report.
So, tonight I wanted to talk a little bit about the Practical Nurse Program and how our admissions is going. As of today, we've accepted about 30 students for the day and we're only at about nine, nine for the evening program.
How many for the evening?
Sorry?
How many for the evening?
We've only accepted nine. You can accept up to 32. But what we're responding to right now is that change in the policy that we made where we're requiring everybody to take the Ts in person with us. At the beginning of the pandemic, we started to accept online scores where students would test remotely with ATI and be able to send us the scores. And we were finding that their scores didn't really reflect how their capabilities in the program necessarily. So, last fall, we made the decision, and you approved, that we would have them only tested person. So, to date, we have tested 230 people. And I will say, it's been a lot of work from my staff. They, they're here on Saturdays and at night. And we're always trying to figure out what would be good times for testing and when people will actually be able to find parking if they come to test. So, but we tested 230 people. And so, last week, I took a look at, well, what are they, how are they scoring on this? So, the, my report is a bit of a suck, but thank you for putting this up, Holly. One of the things that ATI looks at is something called academic preparedness. And they just lump people into categories of developmental or basic or proficient, advanced. And then the last one is exemplary. Now, what the scores are there don't really matter because ATI tests for four areas and we only look at three of those areas. So, the students are taking a science component, but their scores are always low because they're not taking it seriously. So, everything has shifted down the scale a little bit because of that. But we can't, that's been the same way whether it was online or in person. So, we can look at what those categories are. So, the blue is what the scores were when they were online. And then in-person is what we've seen with our 230 people that we've tested actually in-person and in the building. And so, in the past, the mean, the average amount was proficient. Everybody, you know, the average was proficient, but now that's switched to basic. So, it's gone down a little bit. And you can see that there's more people in the developmental and the basic category than there were in the proficient and the advanced and the exemplary. We don't have people that are exemplary anymore. So, I think it is a little odd that I'm thinking it's a bit of a victory that people's scores have gotten lower. But I think they are more accurate representations of, of a student's ability if we know they're doing it in front of us and that they're the right person and that they're getting the, you know, that these are their actual scores. And then if you look at the bottom section a little bit, we test for English language usage, math, and reading. The light beige is our score, you know, like the, the benchmark that we want. And there's, and blue is the online test. So, you can see that they've lost about 9.2%. The scores have decreased by 9.2% in English. And in math, they've decreased about 8.5%. And reading is just about the same, it was only like 0.6. So, we are definitely seeing a change in those scores. So, I think bringing them in-house has, it's helped us get a more accurate representation of the student. It has also, I think, slowed down a little bit of our process because we can only test so many people at a time. And we'll probably be testing a little bit longer because it's a, you know, a year where we need a day in the evening. But I think it's going well.
Questions about that?
And we're be running the summer boot camp again for the Practical Nurse students that we did last summer where we had them come in and do some study skills and some math, basic math and a little bit of, we did like a medical terminology class. They've had some EL support as well. So, we're hoping to do that again. We're starting to look at who will do that for us and let the accepted students know about it.
Any questions for that? Now, we'll move on to, to policy subcommittee meetings.
Well, that might be Tony Branch.
It might be.
So, I'm going to open up the policy subcommittee, policy changes that are clearly in red. And then I'm going to look to my left and defer the balance of this discussion to Holly. Thank you, Holly.
Well, thank you to the subcommittee. Thank you, Chair Branch, because we've been making good progress getting through our policies over the last month and a half or so. We've been really focusing in on the G policies, which really are the policies around personnel. So, as you can see, we have eliminated a lot of what were called policies that are actually better characterized as philosophy statements and administrative details that, for the most part, are carried in our employee handbook. So, and then in other areas, anytime you see the blue, that's new, new language. And for the most part, this is language that we've adopted from the Mass Association of School Committees, which maintains and updates a model policy book. So, we do go back and look at those policies every, anytime they make an update and make sure that what we're saying is, is correct. So, this is just, you know, emphasizing that only the school committee can create positions and only the school committee can abolish a position. So, a position can remain unfilled, but nobody in the school district can unilaterally just say that a position doesn't exist anymore without the school committee. We went through and looked at support staff contracts and compensation plans. Just updated the language, made sure that we were including language about compensatory leave. So, while the average employee at a private company must be paid overtime, any public school or public employer can offer the employee, or the employee can request ahead of time that they receive compensatory time off in lieu of overtime. So, we put that information in there as well. And all these notes, once the policies are adopted, are removed. So, again, you'll see that there's just a lot of redundancies and that's what most of this red, red line stuff is, is that stuff has been removed. Support staff fringe benefits, those are all explained in our employee handbook. We no longer have a sick leave bank for non-federation employees, so that is gone. 10- and 12-month employees, they're described in the handbook. Compensatory time is already included elsewhere. Evening course tuition, we don't offer continuing ed courses at the TI anymore. So, this involves a leave. Leaves of absences, those are all laid out in the employee handbook. And the school district is bound by all the laws associated with extended leave, medical leave, domestic, leave for victims of domestic violence, et cetera. So, those are all carried. So, there's a lot of redundancies.
Page 24. Can we just, yeah. Just the new language. Thank you, Holly.
So, we updated the language on holidays. So, the school committee does, does, the school committee does approve the school calendar. They do establish the, any holidays outside of the legal holidays that are established by the condo up in Massachusetts. The one tiny, tiny piece that, that we included was that at the superintendent's discretion, we can close the Friday after Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve as paid holidays for our full-year employees. We've traditionally done that, so I wanted to make sure it was in policy. And then we just sort of delineated what the vacations are for non-administrative staff and pointed out that, oh, Deb, this is, this has to be pulled out, right? What's wrong? That should be red. Our 10-month employees are not, don't have day vacation leave. And then just recognizing that the administrators have their vacation delineated in their legal contract. What's in here? I'm not sure to make notes about what was there. This is just that we're, we're going to evaluate our staff and on a regular basis. All of our Federation evaluations are delineated in the Federation Agreement. And all, anything related to support, so staff termination of employment is laid out in detail in our employee handbook, how we're going to handle that. And it has been vetted and is regularly vetted by our legal counsel to make sure that we're following all the requirements. And this is just retirement of support staff members and just making sure that the language around who's eligible for retiree health benefits is still there. We made no changes to that. That remains the same. So, if you, you have to have worked at the school district for 10 years or have worked five years for us and have a total of 20 years of service in MTRS or, or Mass retirement. And then you do have, you have to retire from here and let us know within 18 months of employment that you want that. Health insurance, that's just so we can sort of budget for our long-term healthcare liability. We don't have an early retirement policy, so that is gone. And this is all staff, this is just a restatement of the insurance in two sections of all. So, there you go.
So, this was a lot, no, this was a lot of work that has been done by Deb and Holly. And I think of the policy subcommittee members who have been consistent in showing up and being a part of this. But I just wanted to get that out there, that this has been a lot of work. And I appreciate you two for the hard work you're doing and for the direction our chairs have given us.
Just for clarification before we go to the vote, Representative Souza should be able to vote on this because there's something specific to the Federation. I just want to clarify that.
In fact, it's primarily about non-federated.
Right, exactly. So, I just, yep, no problem. So, I will entertain a motion.
Move to accept the first reading and waive the second reading of the revisions and modifications to Policies GA through GD through GD QE as recommended by the Policy Subcommittee on March 25th of 2024.
Further discussion? Now, we'll take it to the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes have at nine zero. Thank you. Moving on to DTI Policy Joint Subcommittee Meeting.
Barbara.
You've done it, go first.
Oh, Barbara. So, we worked, we worked on this today. And I want to tell you all that Pat did an awesome job in packaging this, explaining it. And I think we, we reached the conclusion that we would forward it to this full body and we've done so today. Pat, do you want to add anything? Do you want to go step-by-step? I would recommend that we not. I would recommend that you trust, everyone trust, that the Subcommittee met. And this is an awesome policies. Pat, do you want to add to this?
No.
No, I didn't.
I also want to say that, actually, I did meet with Pat before and I knew about the hard work that she has put in on this and the dedication that she has to the students and ensuring that they all have the support they need and looking at all policies everywhere to make sure that we're in line with them. And it goes on and on. So, we thank you so much.
And Chair Branch and Chair Kaplan, I just want to mention too that we are forwarding this to the Personnel Subcommittee. So, it's going to come back again.
Oh, we can look at it.
So, the first one, the policy doesn't need to go to Personnel.
Right.
Just the second.
The second one.
The salary one?
The salary one.
Just the salary one.
Yes, okay.
And the salary one in which Pat made cogent arguments and we support.
Absolutely. Yes. So, when it comes back, I think that would be a great time, Pat, for you to kind of give the expl, the full explanation so that we can bring it to a vote.
Thank you. Christine, thank you.
But I am going to ask them, I am asking for the committee to approve the first reading and waive the second reading of the readmissions policy. The salary piece has to come back.
Right.
Yeah.
All right. Just wanted to be.
All right, so, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the first reading and waive the second reading of the PN Program readmissions policy.
Second.
Well, and we're going to approve the STI part-time teacher salary levels and forward to the Personnel Subcommittee for review as recommended by the Joint Technical Institute Policy Subcommittee. It's two parts.
Sorry, I thought we were not, I thought that just had to go. I didn't know that was part of the motion.
Say so.
Add it.
Can I get a second? Okay. Any further discussion? Now, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Eyes have at nine zero. Thank you. Moving on, Personnel Subcommittee and Chair Natero.
Yes, last Thursday, we looked at five high school administrative job descriptions and one was the MTSS Coordinator job description. Yeah, it was, it was, again, like all the other stuff that we do, I think we did a very good job of going through this and also the presentation that was done by Superintendent was great and explaining all the situations, all the issues that we had to, to work up. And I'll pass the baton down to him.
As part of our policy review, one of the things that we noticed was that we have a policy that says that administrative job descriptions and salaries are supposed to be presented on an annual basis. So, a lot of the changes that we made were just to go through and review and update salaries and just, you know, we didn't make any changes to salaries. The one I do want to focus on is the MTSS Coordinator because this is a new position. You've heard Dr. Howell refer to it earlier. It was created with SIR funds for the first two years or three years now. And so, we do think that position has value and we want to bring it into the, to the budget. And so, I would, you know, I want you to sort of understand what that is. It's a, it's a, it's a position to really look at supporting students based on their individual need. So, all students need Tier One supports. Tier Two supports are those students who need a little extra attention. Tier Three are when we start really talking about students that need the at-risk team to come together to figure out why they're not being successful. And so, that's what this position does. They coordinate those services. They are not providing those services, but they're making sure that a student who's chronically absent, that we're calling home to see what's going on, that if they need counseling services, that they're making sure that that's happening. If they're struggling academically, that they're going to meet with the teacher. If they're a special education student, that they're meeting with the co-teacher or the paraprofessional. So, they're just sort of keeping track of everything that's going on. They're tracking the interventions that are made. And then, you know, hopefully, we're seeing some, some progress. It's a school year position. We do have a person who's been in this position in full disclosure through the grant process. We are, because it is a brand-new position that the School Committee has created, we are going to advertise it internally and ask that person to reapply. Other folks may apply as well, but certainly, we won't give that candidate due consideration for his years of service that he has done in the role. But I think it's important, you know, for us to follow that process. So, do anybody have any questions about the MTSS Coordinator?
Julia, understanding how important the position is, I certainly do. With all the talk at the state level of them putting a hiring freeze at the state level in the administration, is this something that we've looked at to get a fund this year after year? If our budget changes?
Yes.
Because they don't want to create a position that has to be gone.
I feel the same way. I feel the same way. And, you know, Mark and I were very, very closely together to. to think about not just how we're going to fund something this year, but how we're going to fund it in five years. You know, how we're going to fund it in five years if our enrollment doesn't grow, right? If we don't get a STEM addition, then our enrollment's going to plateau even out, right? How do we continue to fund these positions? How are we going to fund them, you know, post-negotiations with the federation when salaries are going up and those kinds of things? So we take all of that into, into consideration. We have to. The last thing I want to do is hire someone in two years. And they commit to us and in two years, I have to say, I'm sorry, but we didn't think ahead and now we're coming forward. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. I just want to point out that prior to us having this position, we always had an attendance supervisor that oversaw attendance. And during COVID, when we weren't sure what was going to happen with our budget, we decided not to renew an attendance supervisor. So we didn't work for, force into laying anyone off. So this is really just reinstating that position.
And just based on enrollment, we have the funds to fund this position going forward. Obviously, if, if, you know, if enrollment's to drop or things was changing, it'd be a conversation, not just this position, you know, overall. But based on our enrollment, applications that we are looking at, things going forward, you know, over our next, you know, long-term goals, that this wouldn't be an issue to fund.
And, you know, we always try and focus on student services. That's where we put our money, right? So.
Very important position, there's no question.
We'll do without other things before we let go of student services.
Any more questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. So the motion is two parts. One is to accept the revisions to the high school administrator job descriptions. And then the second part is to approve the new M T S S coordinator job description.
I'll read it, Tony.
So move. I didn't. Come on, I'm trying to help you. Can I get a second?
Nice job.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, it's bring it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion passes nine zero. Thank you. Then we have Legislative Subcommittee on here.
I do not believe we have a report.
I don't think we have a report for that. Legislative Liaison Report.
I'll just mention again, what Holly mentioned, that day on the Hill, that's going to be Monday, May sixth. And I just want to also mention, anyone's interested in preparation for that day, M A S C is holding virtual morning lunch this Friday at noon. Let me know if you would like to be on that. And they're going to be discussing legislative priorities and advocacy techniques to be successful on the Hill.
Thank you. Next is Chair's report.
Okay, the House Ways and Means budget comes out tomorrow. Amendments are due by Friday, four o'clock. They're expecting that they're going to be putting amendments about transportation, new transportation, about the payment per student. They're hoping to up it. And right now, everybody's concerned about the definition of low-income students because the numbers have been so skewed and that affects all schools tremendously financially. And they're not really sure what happened and why the numbers are so skewed. They think that maybe it could have been because the government was financing people during COVID. But that, that's only a temporary thing. It doesn't really raise them from the poverty level. So we're going to be checking into that to see what that is. But it'll be interesting to hear what the, what the budget is tomorrow.
Oh, I do want to say, on April thirtieth, Division Three, which we're part of, is having a program with Tracy Novick is running on seventy minutes on chapter seventy. And it's going to be held at the Holbrook Middle Senior High School. And they're going to have pizza.
From Linwood.
So enticing.
Linwood's pizza, Tony, come on. They must have personal pizzas for everyone.
Well, Holly, Mark and I got a chapter seventy in seventy by Representative Adam Scanlon at the Mansfield Select Board meeting. And we had, what, they had the congressman, chief of staff there. Senator Warren, staff, yeah.
Senator Feingold, Senator Scanlon, Rep. Barrows. They did a nice presentation on how the chapter, how chapter seventy is.
Actually calculated.
There was a quiz after, everybody failed.
And if you want to look at the slides, I'd be happy to forward them on to you. Quite, quite an in-depth report.
It is. It was a very, very good report.
All right, moving on to the chair's report. I have nothing to report this month, so we'll move on to I, Executive Director's, D E I's report.
Yeah, I don't have a formal report, just a couple of feel-good things just to talk about. Holly actually mentioned stuff about the, the equity audit. We're on pace, been meeting with Mass Insight and everything is, is going well. We're getting ready for their arrival and, and formulating what their schedule will look like for that day and making sure that we are in touch with stakeholders for that, for their visit. Couple of feel-good things, I sent out an email just recently that just went out about our extending community member recognition. Over a hundred candidates, well, input, input, listen to me. Over a hundred inquiries were made for our faculty and staff members, which included students as well that, that put in. What an amazing turnout for our campus and for our community. This, this, the people that we recognized was Shannon Cleary, academic teacher, Scott Tessier, vocational teacher, Odali Rojas, high school administrator, and Christine Barrows, Christine Navarros, who is, works in the T I. When I say when we went around to recognize these individuals, not just their surprise, but the, the energy from their colleagues and the energy from their students, where it was absolutely amazing. It literally made you home, like you choked up by, by seeing how like happy they were for their colleagues and teachers. What we're also doing in this is we're not, you know, so many people were recognized and responded. So later this week, we will be sending out emails to all faculty and staff members who, who got nominations to thank them and to show a little bit, we're clipping out some of, some of the feedback that others had said about them. So that way everyone feels really good about it. So it's not about just who wins. It's all, right, because it's not a win-loss thing. It's about recognizing the great things that we're doing here. And that's, we're trying to cultivate a culture of belonging and these things really go a long way and making sure everyone understands that, you know, we're, we fully understand and see them and the outstanding work that they're doing here at Southeastern. Moving forward as well, tomorrow starts our open enrollment for, for our benefit. We have our benefits fair from ten, April tenth to the twenty-second. Just giving a heads up that on the eleventh, we, for those who are not able to get to the fair tomorrow, we will have, Melissa Woods will have an open door policy on the eleventh. So anyone who needs to catch up and wants to talk about that, they are free to come in all day and she's making herself available for that. But honestly, just, you know, and lastly, twenty-eighth, I've been working with athletics this year and activities. And we went to, we had the junior prom. What an amazing day seeing our students. They were, they looked fabulous and it was an amazing event. And right now, we're working with our seat program and working with students that are really looking at how we can enhance this, these events to be more inclusive, to looking at what we can do as far as fundraising and, and making some, you know, tangible changes to even make these events even better. But what an amazing day. Our students looked great, the D J was great. That was just a fun, fun night for everyone. So again, not really comprehensive report, but one that makes you feel really good about the direction of our school.
That's an awesome report. Thank you, John. Any questions for?
Were they on? Last but not least, before the superintendent. All right. So I just want to give you guys an update on admissions. So we did send out four hundred and thirty-two offers of admissions on Friday. We have already had two hundred and fifty students who have accepted the offer of admission.
How many?
Two hundred and fifty. We've had five who have declined the offer of admission. So they have seven days to let us know whether they're coming or not. And if we haven't heard from them in seven days, we'll reach out to them. We'll follow up, make sure they got their mailer and things like that. At that point, we will send out a second round of admissions. We can, our target is to enroll four hundred and twenty, well, to have four hundred and twenty to four hundred and thirty acceptances because we know between now and the first day of school, some will drop off. So we want to start this school year with four hundred and fifteen to four hundred and twenty. If you are getting any phone calls or things, just let me know. We reach out to every parent who calls us. Our admissions team follows up with them. No exceptions. So it may take it a day for them to get back to them, but they do call every parent who, who reaches out to ask about acceptances. And they're really the best place to go because they can tell parents about what the, the appeal policy is, if they think that there's been a mistake in the scoring of the application or if they think that their, their data is wrong about their student's attendance or something like that, they can go over that with them.
So. Can I, I'm sorry. This is just something weird that happened to me. Somebody had reached out to me because they, their child got accepted and they're like really unsure now because I think it got real that they might go here and leave everything they've ever known. Have we considered maybe for kids who don't accept right away, but don't decline right away, like, is there something we could do to be like, hey, like, come back in, check us out again, like, you know, you liked us before enough to apply, you know? I know that sounds silly, but like, I think maybe some of them kind of get cold feet and I'd hate to lose the right kids for our programs because they got nervous to leave home, right? I don't know if that's something we can consider, or maybe it's not worth dealing with, but I don't know how many kids that happens to.
Uh, in Foxborough, it's a fairly high percentage.
Is it?
Yeah.
It's a small community.
It's actually something I, I looked at last year and I was like, oh, that's all about. And, you know, I wasn't sure if it was kind of a one-off, but, you know.
There was some like misinformation in, in one of the like local groups too, so I tried to chime in. A former student chimed in, but, you know, just something, and again, maybe it doesn't happen in the other communities, but I, you know, I tried to put some information back out there and I, I offered. I said, you know, call and, I don't know if that's something we do, but I do think, you know, that's getting cold feet to kind of leave all of the people you've ever known for, and unknown, you know, especially in the smaller communities where, you know, not so many kids come here from Sharon. So like they might, you know, abruptly, then they might feel like they know a bunch of people, but in some of the smaller ones, they don't. I don't know, it's just something to think about. I hate to lose kids that are right fit for us because they're scared to, again, scared, but nervous. Something to throw out there.
It, you know, it's that, it's that delicate balance between having a whole bunch of kids who desperately want to come here. You know, how long do you hold the?
Yeah.
But right now, we only have, had five people to come. And, you know, we typically do this, students who decline because those things are very valid. Leaving your friends is a very valid reason not to want to go anywhere, right? Or, you know, whatever it is. So, but, you know, I just, no one is officially on the waitlist yet because we haven't had all these responses. So we haven't sent, sent out the second round of acceptancees. But we know that this is a very stressful time for our applicants and their families. So, you know, if you get any calls and emails, just reach out.
Is the list of students that you send these acceptance letters to, is it just aggregated by like their score and stuff, not their district and town?
Oh, no, we have their names, their middle school.
Well, for instance, if your Foxborough student doesn't come, that lowers your percentage. So, and like we want to keep these other towns as engaged as possible, we're not going to send their denial to another Foxborough application, right?
Our regional agreement doesn't allow us to do that.
Right, so that's going to go, so how does that work? Does that just get filtered into the next person on the waiting list? Or does that get filtered to the next person on the waiting list from that represented town?
No, our legal, our regional agreement does not allow us to consider the town of residence.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get at.
So it's just whoever has the next.
Right, whoever is wherever they are located.
This might be a unique experience. I just, you know, when they said that, I was like, oh.
I think, I think transitioning out of, you know, your local school district to a regional school district is, can be very stressful. But, you know, I, I would encourage any student, you know, who's having those, those feelings to call and talk to admissions sooner rather than later. So that if they do want to come back in or they do want to talk to another student who's here from their community about their experience, we can do that before they hit that deadline for.
I just want one of those paper hawks.
I don't know, the guy's just bouncing off. I'm sure they have something left. All right, so I will leave it at that.
Any more questions, any questions for Holly in general?
No, no, it's okay.
All right. As I said, I am moving to go into executive session according to chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, paragraph eighty-three, which is necessary to discuss strategy in respect to negotiations and litigation because an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public party and to not reconvene in open session to adjourn the meeting. Did I do that?
We do need a roll call vote. Jen, you can stay there. I never get to stay.
Oh, yeah. Friday, I'm up.
Jen can stay or not.
Congratulations, good luck.
That's me.
We have to do a roll call before you can say.
Yes, let's do roll call.
Thank you so much.
Roll call vote. Christine?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Toni?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Mindy?
Yes.
Randy? Thank you.
In my notes, ten stays.